Nathan?
We're good.
Okay, we're live.
All right.
All right, Diane, will you take role?
Trudy Bartley here. Joseph Garrity.
Here.
Nikki Hampton.
Here.
Dean Hindenlang.
Here.
Melissa Klosterman Lando.
Here.
Stephen Lawrence.
Here.
Tony Johnson Liggins.
Here.
Bob Morris. Randy Smith.
Here.
Donna Ziderwick.
Here.
Hey, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 5:32. So first, Board Chair announcement is that we're joined by our new board member this evening, Joe, welcome.
Good to be here.
Would you maybe share a few words about yourself and what you do in your professional career and maybe why you're joining the board?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I'm Joe Garrity and I work at the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, or MORPC. I've worked there about 10 years, and in that capacity, I focus on government affairs and community relations. Like many of you, I've had family members who face mental health and alcohol addiction issues. And so I wanted to be more engaged. At MORPC, we're a regional organization, so it's 90 local governments and a 15-county region. But I'm born and raised from Franklin County, been a Columbus resident for 13 years. And I've had mentors, colleagues, and friends offer me advice about how I can give back and be more engaged in my community. And this was an opportunity where I felt like I had something to offer, but also I had a lot to learn. So I'm really honored to serve as a trustee with all of you, learn from all of you, and find unique ways in a very unique time for our community, and maybe a little bit too unique of a time as a country. But I really look forward to the challenge to serve and learn from all of you.
Great, well, welcome. We're happy to have you. And this has been, I think, a great experience for all of us. And I think we are really thrilled to have you joining us, and your expertise is very welcome. So thanks. Before I turn it over to you, Eric, I want to just commend you and your team. A round of applause for the team. Grand opening ceremonies. Shelley, wonderful job, I think, was a great demonstration of all of the collaboration that it took to get that Crisis Care Center funded and built. And I think the turnout was lovely. You had a beautiful day. And I didn't make it to the community open house, but it looked like that was great as well. So, roast to you and your team. I'll turn it over to you now.
Sure, that was where I was going to start, and I wanted to thank all of you, those of you that came out. But honestly, for your courage to get us there. This doesn't happen without the board saying, "We're putting our stake in the ground," and that we identified this as a goal and we were relentless about it. So our ability to maneuver, raise dollars, enter into partnerships, press forward with our construction partners, no offense to way. You know, when it got sticky, it was this board that held firm, right? You will never waver, and that showed. And I think that signaled to our partners that we were serious and committed, and that's how we got this project, at least this phase of the project done. Because now, now's when the magic happens, right? This is where services begin, and our ongoing relationships with our providers, and making this work the way it was intended. I know that our team has a pretty, and this is, you know, compliments to our Community Advisory Council. We already started identifying what metrics we wanted to make sure we move, right? With these additional investments in our community around crisis care. And we want to see kind of proof of concept, what we, how we designed it, we want to see if it's working that way. And if it's not, what are the things we're going to modify to make sure we are reaching our community's goals? So that's the next phase of this, so we're very excited about it. I think the last update I had, I'm looking at my colleague Jonathan, the last update I had, we are targeting last week of June, opening for the center. However, we recognize we've got a couple more licensures and certifications to get, but we hope that won't extend beyond August. So we, our window is between June and August for the opening. I said this earlier at my senior staff meeting, and I certainly will do it in front of all of you as trustees, after commending you on your courage, but our team has just been outstanding. I think you've seen that, we've tried to demonstrate that here at our board meetings. You know, I acknowledged this in my remarks, I think the project management of this center has been just stellar. I know there have been hard days, but Jonathan, you know how much I appreciate you, and I want to say that in front of the trustees as well. And I know, I know you've had a construction whisperer in Trudy Bartley helping make sure things happen. So I want to call that out because, you know, I'll just share this moment with you, and some of you were here. I think Trudy, I know you were here that night, I can't remember if anyone else was around the table. I remember, it was probably one of my first board meetings, I came and I was talking about, "Oh, we're going to get these consultants," and you guys were like, "You're not doing any of that, okay? We've already made these decisions." And I mean, I thought, "Oh my, I don't know if this project is where I thought it was." And I thought, "What have we done here?" But your leadership and the board's leadership at that time was critical. And so it set us on the right path. The other thing I did earlier today was commend Shelley on a flawless execution of our community's celebration. I thought it was about family, family, you know, and the whole team. We saw the staff members there that day, I think it was a moment of pride for all of us. It's also been a moment of pride for commissioners, which is kind of nice, because we need their support for the upcoming levy. But I think it was a moment of pride for our whole community, and it's my privilege to at least been a part of the team. So thank you, thanks for trusting me to the team members. Thanks for standing shoulder-to-shoulder with me and the board, thanks for your support for, on behalf of our whole team. So thank you for that moment to be able to talk about the center. I think we sent out the photography roll to each of you in an email last week, and we had a little scroll going on when the board meeting started. So those are kind of neat, some really neat photos, you see yourselves in those. But hopefully you'll be able to download the ones you want to keep. Next thing, the levy. So where are we? What round is this, Anthony, in terms of questions? We are on round five. The last time we came to you all, I think we were on, were we on four? I think we were on three, Dr. Lawrence, and four was the coordinating committee. And we thought, "Oh, they only had two questions." Do you remember that? Well, now we're on five. But the good news is, they're coming back with maybe two or three questions each time, but we're getting closer. My understanding is they meet?
She said that that was the last set of questions, then they meet Thursday.
They meet this Thursday, and will offer a recommendation not only to us, but to the commissioners, right? So that, at this point, the recommendation they make to us will be also to the commissioners. I do think the environment continues to change. I think those of you in government relations recognize the environment and the levy fatigue. I think the amount of, I don't want to say pain, but the fatigue is being vocalized. And I think it's being vocalized by our lawmakers. And so I think, I think there are some things we should not ignore when we think about how to move forward with our levy request to the voters. I was, Monica and I were on a call this afternoon with several other boards across Ohio, and some of them from counties where they are absolutely putting their foot down against any type of property tax increase, property taxes at all. And so we recognize, you know, Franklin County is unique in that way. I don't think we have the same challenges, but levy fatigue and voters being very sensitive right now, and just the dialogue around property taxes right now, it's loud, right? I mean, it's, it is, I listen to and watch Columbus on the Record, there was a whole segment on that this past weekend. Sam Gresham and others weighed in on property taxes and how folks are feeling about this. So I, you know, it's an interesting time for us to be moving forward. But we will continue to move forward, see what the recommendation is from the Levy Review Committee, and then strategize accordingly with our campaign consultant. And we certainly will check in with all of you on what that looks like and what our plan will be.
And we don't have an indication right now from them when we might know?
We do not. The only indication that I have is that the commissioners feel very strongly about the resource that we've brought online in our community and that it must be renewed. And that has been consistent and remained consistent. But, you know, I recognize, you know, they're accountable to the voters as well.
Right.
I've heard that you will probably get the increase. That's just from chatter that I've heard at the county. I'm not saying that that is committed, but understanding the importance of the Crisis Center and understanding the importance of all the other programatics and the programs that you fund. I think of any levy that is moving forward, that Adam will not just be renewal, will be a renewal plus.
It's great to know.
You know, the biggest issue right now is that I'm on that funding review advisory, and we were told basically that we can't even think of anything that would add addition to property tax as a source for social services, housing, anything else. So that was a nonstarter for us. And it's due to the fact, because of the levy organizations and renewals that are upcoming, not only this year, but in following years.
Because it's us in the zoo this year. I'm not sure about the others in terms of DED development.
It was Administrator Wilson who was discussing this. To let us know, to manage our expectations as far as recommendations.
It's helpful. Thank you. That's good insight. So we will continue to walk the paces on this, and we'll keep you all informed. If we do hear back on their recommendation between now and our next board meeting, we'll certainly communicate that.
And do you, is there anything, you know, right now, I think what we're mainly waiting for is what we'll go to the voters with? There's, there's not really a question of whether or not we'll go, correct?
Not unless they came back and said, "Based on the environment, we think you should not go."
Okay, so, which is probably, well, I don't know whether it's likely or unlikely, but I guess it doesn't really matter. My question is, are there, is there anything more that we should be doing now in anticipation of knowing, given the fact that we will, we may need to begin running a campaign?
No, I've already worked with some, some campaign consultants, but we're putting essentially the structure in place so that as soon as we get that recommendation, and we have several asks for fundraising to be able to help support the campaign, you know, we have to, we do have to raise dollars for this campaign. We are already thinking about co-chairs of the campaign, representatives from our network. We actually briefed all the providers this morning about where we were and that they should anticipate communication from us here in the next couple of weeks. So we are, we are, we have sketched out the structure, and it will harden as soon as we get a recommendation from the community that says, "Here's what we're thinking, you know, officially blessing it so that we can move forward with confidence." A little more confidence than we have now, let's say it that way. Any other questions on that? Curiosities? Thank you. And then just two other things. We are participating in the NAMI Walk, which is our National Alliance for Mental Wellness. We do it every year. Ann Sarin used to be a big champion of this walk. So Adam H. Franklin County will have a team, so if any of you want to walk with us, it'd be great. Love to have you. We also participate in the Pride March, and I know Tony has been legendary. I know, your outfits are amazing. And she walks with us on the Pride March, it's a really great time, we go out, we support our community. Lots of great crowds, lots of great energy, so we'd love to have you. If you don't have a team currently, we'd love to have you on our team.
Can you say when it was?
It is June 14.
June 14.
Yeah. Love to have you, Madam Chair. I believe. I could say so much more about so many people in this room. But again, I thank the team this morning, and I, again, just appreciate everything they do.
Okay, we have no community participation this evening, so we'll move on to the meeting minutes. We have three sets of minutes in your packet for the meetings that were held in March. Take a look, coordinating, community advocacy council, and board meeting. Are there any concerns with the meeting minutes as presented? And if not, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, Nikki. Second, second, Tony, thank you, Tony. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Minutes are approved. That leads us to the financial report. Anthony will present the financial report this evening.
I'm happy to provide the monthly financial report through April. You'll see the first table, which is the schedule of revenues, expenses, and changes in cash balance. All things to highlight, so our budget through revenue at the top, you'll see expenditures below that, and then we'll have our cash calculators down here. So for revenue, our revised budget through the end of April was a hundred, a little over $114 million. Our actual revenue was a little over $53 million, which is driven primarily by that first half levy payment. It is, as we've mentioned before, a little bit higher than the first half payment from last year, by about $200,000, $275,000. But still, we've seen some declines in the commercial sector. That's something we'll continue to watch. On the expenditure side, our revised budget through the end of April is a little over $124 million. Our spending is a little over $42 million. Most of that's driven by support for service providers at a little over $38 million bucks. Thirty-six percent of the budget are for that category. Cash for all operating funds by the end of the month were a little over $63 million. It's cut off a bit, but if you, if you add up the 120-day calculation there, and then a number a little further below, 69 days, the total cash on hand is 189 days of cash, cash on hand. It would be 69 days at the time of the next levy payment. So that's below our target of 90 days, but that's all funds, and it doesn't account for state and federal funds that haven't been received yet, but that are expected. If you look at just the levy fund, which is in the narrative, the projection for cash on hand is 100 days at that point, so that would be above the target. Going to the next table. Our assets and liabilities report. Assets at the end of April were over $109 million, which you'll see right here, the top of the report is assets, liabilities are below that. On the asset side, that's primarily because of our cash on hand, which is over $60 million, as we mentioned, and property tax receivable, which is over $40 million. For liabilities, the total is a little over $69 million, which you'll see there. And that's primarily because of liabilities attributed to service providers. So the difference is positive over $40 million, so that's a good indicator of solid financial. Going to the next table, you'll see a breakdown of our service provider budget and expenditures. So the budget for service providers is a little over $99 million at this point of the year. You'll see the budget here on the left side, you'll see expenditures on the right. You can see that treatment, crisis, treatment care, crisis, and prevention are the three biggest pieces of the pie. And spending, for the most part, follows the budget. Treatment and crisis spending has been, is trending a little below budget. Recovery, prevention, and housing, a little bit above budget. Going to the next table. You'll see our board and board of spending authority analysis. The expense breakdowns here, at the top, the budget for this current year is a little over $13 million, around 11% of our overall operating budget. Year-to-date expenditures are a little bit, a little bit less than $4 million. Looking at the types of expenditures, salaries are about 27% of the budget. Fringe is about 30, so both of those are below 30, which is that, which is one-third of the way through the year. Services and materials are a bit lower as we're starting projects at the, at the beginning of the year. And county fees, those align with levy payments, so that's why 51% of that has been expended so far.
Anthony, before you go to the next one, I know I've gotten questions about the vacancies that we've had, and we kept them open for a while. I do want to let you know, two of those positions are, we were actively hiring for, one we had to go back, and then a third one's about to be put forward. I'm still going to hold two vacancies, though. So three are in motion, but two I'm going to hold. Right, thank you.
Sure.
Did you say what vacancies you're moving forward? Sure. Senior Director of IT, and we talked about this the last meeting we were together, about our IT plan, and Jonathan's going to give an update on that tonight. We think it's really important. Now we're ready to bring in new leadership on that position, I think it's timely. And then if you recall, Meg Griffin, when she left to go to the new Franklin County Jail, a great worker over there in provider relations, actually, we were very close. We got a candidate, and then we decided to go a different direction. So we went back out, we're back out recruiting that person. So those are the two that are active. And then the Director of Education, which was formerly Shawna Gibbs' position. We, you know, we value the relationships with our education community in our schools. And we've repurposed, not repurposed the position, we've, I would say we've refreshed it, right, Monica? We had this conversation recently, and now that we've tailored it more to what we want, really building that coalition among school districts, working through the funds that we give them for prevention, their need for more treatment, we've, we've got a lot of negotiation and work to do there. So that's the third one we're going to act. Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for asking the question.
I recall sometime back, we were talking, you were talking about the need for somebody to help manage the facility, particularly the new one. Is that a position that is open?
No, we hired.
We hired.
We did. Penny, what's Penny's last name? Miller, right? Penny Miller, when did she start with us, Joe?
That was two years ago.
A year ago? Really?
Yeah, one year today.
She was there, that didn't look. Part of the reason the facility is in the shape that it is in, because she partnered with Jonathan, made sure eyes dotted, t's crossed. We did recruit her, though, from our neighbor, Franklin County Children's Service, so it's a little prickly. But she's been great. She's been awesome. Yep. And she, she's also managing some of the work here. By the way, the reason why we're set up like this, because construction materials will start coming into the building to redo them for the plumbing project. So we're ready to finally get started. Are you sure? I don't think it happened. Look, Joe has, I think he's signaling to all of you, it's actually happened. So yes, she has started. Thank you for the question. Anthony, sorry about that.
No, no problems. Next, you'll see the Crisis Center report. So you'll see cash at the top, and then a revenue section, and then expenditures at the bottom. Our expenditure budget is, or sorry, our revenue budget is a little less than, a little more than $72.9 million. Ten million of that is, we'll go back to the county once the project's completed. It's been advanced for cash flow purposes. Couple of things to highlight. One, we've drawn down most $500,000 in our federal earmark from HERSA, so that successfully came through in the last month or so. And we're working on pulling down the remaining revenue amounts, so there's $450,000 from the state. And then we still have nearly $3 million at the Columbus Foundation. Biggest change from an expenditure budget perspective. Joe, I don't know if you can pull that up a little bit, there you go. You can go back down. I just want to catch the whole, capture the whole expenditure section. We have bumped up the contingency dollar amount since the end of March, so that's gone up by about $70,000. So that's, that can be attributed to additional investment income and smaller-sized donations. So we continue to be on budget. And, but there are still voices coming, the project is not complete from the financial side. In total, there's $48.6 million, or 94% of the construction budget that's been expended so far. That concludes the report. You will see the narrative portion as well. We explained essentially what I highlighted in tables, but happy to answer any questions.
Are you anticipating much use of that contingency at this point?
I would expect to use some. I don't know the timing of that exactly, but there are, there are actually projects that aren't included in the current contract with Alfred that we may want to pursue.
Give me any example.
Emblem Courtyard would do one example where the, that would be, we're not engaging it yet because the inpatient unit wouldn't immediately, so that would be one. Landscaping, there could be other items that aren't included. And obviously, we want to conclude the contract with Alfred on budget, but if there's something unexpected, we do have contingency dollars to deal with that. And then finally, this isn't part of a formal report necessarily, but this is, we've been including this the last couple of months. This is a list of contracts and purchase orders that we've been establishing that are below the board threshold. So these are set up throughout the month, and then we report them here. So under the multi-vendor category, there was about $27,000 that's been encumbered. You can see that in this picture up here. That's for a variety of Crisis Center opening expenses, annual meeting, conference expenses, training, et cetera. You'll see a disaster preparedness assessment contract with Strategy Team Limited, which is under the $25,000 threshold, that's federally funded program. We've got a smart care customization with Streamline, that's below that threshold. That's for our claims and enrollment system. And then you'll see a couple of Crisis Center items, some IT hardware maintenance, and then a component registration.
Questions for Anthony? We go back to the Crisis Care Center for the receipts for projects. Doesn't look, are there any that we're concerned about? The Columbus Foundation is merely a request at some point, right? I mean, it's already there, is that right? So any other, is there nothing else to be of concern about?
No, we're working actively with OMAS on the $450,000. That's the 10% that you can't draw down for projects completed.
Okay.
The funding with the Columbus Foundation is sitting in the count there. All commitments have been paid except for one. But there's little risk there.
What constitutes a project completion for OMAS?
I actually sent them an email this, we need to clarify that, whether it's the occupancy circuit or whether it's all of the invoices paid essentially. So I actually emailed them back right before.
Sweet, yeah.
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 Any other questions for Anthony? Okay, if no further questions, may I have a motion to approve the financial report? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Cynthia. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, financial report is approved. It doesn't look like we have any presentations planned for the evening, so that Uh, doesn't look like we have any presentations planned for the evening, uh, so that leads us to the consent agenda. We have two actions. Uh, that were presented to the members of the coordinating committee and placed on the consent agenda for this meeting, action twenty-five oh five oh one. The Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, state fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, passed through funding number three. And action, issue twenty-five oh five oh two, Adam H. Funding for a Cloud Propeller Contract Extension. Copies of the actions are included in the board packet. Are there any questions about these actions? If there's no um questions, we may have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Remove.
Dean, uh, second. Melissa, thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Um, our action agenda. Uh, but it looks like it's been deferred until June. We have an update. Jonathan Thomas will provide a related update now.
That's what it says.
All right. So the floor is yours.
Um, so the, the forthcoming action is us working with People Driven, which is again a state-turned-vendor that was recommended to the board by the Franklin County Data Center. Provide us some expert consultation on a handful of IT-related projects. Specifically, um, moving a lot of our on-premise software that's. Running literally in the basement of this building um into a cloud-based infrastructure, also addressing some um older technology that we have. As well as supporting our establishment of a server environment at the Crisis Center. And then exploring a future relationship with a data center. So that was all previewed during the coordinating committee action. We have had um requirements gathering meetings, so basically sitting down with the consultants. We've had, I think, four or five, I, I can confirm that uh for the minutes. Someone reminds me, uh, requirements gathering meetings to flesh out each of those work streams. We're about eighty percent through that, so they, they've given us a preliminary budgetary estimate, but we're wanting to come back with a higher competence estimate before we ask you all to approve. Whatever spending authority we would need for that. Our IT budget for this year, that's approved through the data center and the data board and OMB, so our spending authority we have for IT um. Is still intact. All the estimates we've been provided by People Driven were under the ranges of what we have previously budgeted for this purpose. We just don't have a final dollar amount. Um, so that's, I'll, I'll pause there to see if there's any questions about why we're deferring. One more board meeting to get the final estimates in on all of these different work streams from People Driven. During the preview of that, uh, there was a question that was asked um by a trustee. About explaining some of the differences between the tech infrastructure and what's happening in the IT space at the Crisis Center. Versus what's happening here and how these projects may relate or not. So there's a, a few slides that I hope illustrate this. As Erica mentioned, we are actively uh hiring the Senior Director of IT, which means I'm not that. So this is my uh best version of, of representing that. I think this will let me. Like a point. There we go. Um. So the two things I wanna talk about with the, the IT environment, it just is a high-level overview. When we think of our building and the Crisis Care Center, I believe there are two different concepts um of interest. One is around ownership of the data and information that occurs in these buildings, and then one's about the physical location. And so the first slide here just has some information talking about from an ownership standpoint. All of the board operations that we do inside of this building, we generate data, we also collect a lot of data from providers. We own that information and that lives on our PCs, in our network, on our servers, on Adam H. Owned equipment. At the Crisis Care Center, overwhelmingly, that's going to be Recovery Innovations environment. So the business they do is like any other provider we contract with. They have their own EHR, they have their own network, they have their own computers, they save all of that, just like everybody else does. If we were going to access it, it would be like a records request process and it would have to follow all the HIPAA protections, just like with any other provider. There are a few things that are unique at the Crisis Center where Adam H. Will be creating some of our own data. But that's around the facilities, so Penny Miller and the software that she uses to manage that environment. As well as the exterior security camera footage. Both Recovery Innovations and Adam H. Have access to those cameras. So we both will have access to those and be storing those. So there are some new types of information and data collected over the Crisis Center that we have to find kind of storage and access capacity for. But it's not nearly as large as one would think with bringing on a sixty-million-dollar building. Overwhelmingly, that's Recovery Innovations business and they store it in their IT invoice. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Um. God forbid, uh, the relationship with RI doesn't work out like we would like and we. Down the road have to switch to a new provider. Is there? Do they, how, what, what happens to the data then? Does that go to the new provider or how would that be handled?
So record transfers, there is a, a rapid clo, rapid closure policy that the board has and there are some requirements in ORC. About if provider ceases operations, how records, like client records, need to be transferred to the next provider and the board's role in that. So we would follow those procedures. We, depending on your perspective, fortunately or unfortunately, have experience in having done that over the last several years with a few providers. We've had a transfer care, most notably Neighborhood House in Columbus area. So it would follow that kind of process. Then there are also some special systems that we give them access to, and the way it works is our facilities director Penny revokes their access. So right now they have access to the camera systems. Even though Penny can't see the clinical care areas, she can revoke all access to RI credentials and then award that access to a new provider. If there needed to be a transfer of care in the bills. Then the next two um slides are, are images just, and this really touches on the Cloud Propeller action that was just approved on the um. On the consent agenda. So basically what this is trying to illustrate is we store all of our information, our primary data right now. On computers in the basement of this building at four forty-seven. We make backups of everything. So downstairs, there are two different machines that have copies of everything. And then our relationship with Cloud Propeller takes the essential data and backs it up over there. That way, if anything goes offline, within a few minutes, we can just point all of our uh machines to the cloud that they manage for us and we can continue our business operations. So that's kind of what we have now. It's, it's a good system, but what we're working towards on the next slide is a much more um. Robust system where we're trying to take the primary stuff that we're saving, four forty-seven primary, we're trying to reduce that footprint. We want fewer things to exclusively live in our basement. And wow, yeah, thank you. So we're wanting to take some of that information and start moving it into Microsoft three sixty-five, Office three sixty-five. Using the technology that's available so people can access information from more places, especially given our hybrid work environment. But we also wanna limit that, so we're working with People Driven to determine things like protected health information. Should we put that up in the cloud or should we keep that on our premise? So they're gonna help walk us through the different pros and cons and options on how we save certain information in different places. Now that we have the Crisis Care Center coming online, though, we have a server room that has twenty-four seven redundancy, has an entire generator. So we can start also backing up our information over there. So the stuff that we save on Adam H. Machines. Can be replicated in both Adam H. Buildings. And then we still have the third layer of a cl, cloud backup, which could continue to be a business relationship with Cloud Propeller. We're gonna explore whether or not the Franklin County Data Center would become that provider or look at other options that People Driven may recommend. So those are the types of evolution um and recommendations that'll be forthcoming with our engagement with People Driven if their action is approved next month. And we would look to implement all of this within the next eighteen months.
We use uh three sixty-five, I don't know if everyone else does too, but um. Very smooth overall, but we keep some, some things end up on our system that I, you don't know about. And like my Excel will just crash if I'm at home. Cause it, it can't talk to a file or something like that. So. I haven't been able to find out from my IT department why things are saved where they are. So just as a recommendation, any sort of. Education for your s, regular old staff of what could save where, because I get very frustrated working from home when everything just crashes.
That's a very fair note. And yeah, user training is also a part of what People Driven will, will offer us. So that's good.
I have a question. I don't know if you would know if it's more for um RI. But with the Crisis Center EMR, do you know if it'll be able to interface with our hospitals or our provider network?
I forget, they title us all the time and I always.
Yeah, this question always gets.
Yeah, it's like, as soon as I sit down, I'll think about it. But so their EHR, it can interact with um Epic, which is the platform of all of our hospitals. Through a health information exchange.
Right, right.
So the issue we have right now is, again, embarrassment of riches in Franklin County. Is we don't have a single health information exchange that everyone has agreed to use. In fact, we have several competing health inform, health information exchange efforts. Going back to when our, we did our original RFP and our requirements for the provider, we have said, once there is a health information exchange. That the Crisis Center operator must participate in it. It's just the community hasn't standardized one. So they're waiting, knowing that it's an expectation, and there are other communities where they do plug into those systems. We just don't have a universal one for them to use right now, and it would be very burdensome to ask them to try to jump into everyone at its different phases of development.
What?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, um, for new business this evening, we have two items of new business. Um, the first is policy update approval request. Uh, that will be presented by Joe.
All right, I don't know if I should stay here or come up to the podium with my mouse, but we'll see how this goes and. Everyone, oh patient. All right, um. So uh, for the benefit of new uh board members and maybe other board members who might forget, uh, we typically come to you, uh. You're the responsible, uh, you're responsible for the policies that guide the work of the. Adam staff. So twice a year, we come to you with. We bundle up our policy reviews and come to you for approval about some of the changes we wanna make to the policy. Typically, it's June and November. Because of the um changes coming with the virtual meetings, uh, we fast-tracked it because we do need to pass specifically one. Related to board meetings and we thought, well, let's just bring a bunch to you at the same time that they were already in, in flight. So that's the request on um my page, sorry. Uh, and so we have uh. A bunch of types of policies that the staff uh use to guide the work. So organizational polies, policies. Either the govern, how the trustees, uh, the governing board operates. We have a bunch of organizational policies that guide Adam's staff work. I'm sorry, Adam H. Staff work. Um, our personnel policies are what we call our employee handbook, fiscal, HIPAA, and claims enrollment policies. And when we come to you, we're asking either to rescind certain policies, uh, revise certain policies. Or ask you to approve some new policies that we think need to be put in place. So. This month, we have none that we wanna rescind. Uh, I believe we'll have some in November that we uh think are outdated. Uh, and we have a bunch of policies that we need to revise, including the first one listed here, tied to that virtual meeting option. That's just sort of letting us have. The knowledge of where in ORC we are allowed to set up virtual meetings for you. I'll quickly kind of walk through a couple of these just to kind of sort of show you sort of where the planning comes from this. So the equal employment opportunity um policy revision. That actually came out of the um audit recommendation, our special audit recommendations. This would have been presented to you in November of last year, but we tabled our request, so we decided to wait till our next, this opportunity. Uh, fiscal policies, a lot of these are coming out of that cultural quality, uh, the twenty-five K issue that we've uh probably talked about every month for the last year or so. This sort of codifies that changes. We need to make sure we understand around the twenty-five K contract. And I'll see if there's anything else that's specific. Um. Um, yeah, something tied to the informal bid process. There's that new rule in the ORC about the, the thresholds. Um. Uh, update, I get updated like a three percent change every year. So the policy is written in such a way that we aren't sort of always having to come to you to say the new threshold is this. The policy says whatever the state has said is the threshold is what we're using as our guiding document. And then um. Under new policies, I wanna just call out, uh, some of this is coming out of the uh two, two purposes. The Awaka culture of quality last year. We recognized that we were doing all of this. We just didn't have something in place for staff to understand that there's some responsibilities that we want you to sort of know about. It's also part of succession planning. I'm always trying to look for things to kind of remember, hey, someone following me needs to know this thing exists. So new policies here. This time around are sort of tied to that idea of cultural quality, call these out as things we should remember. And I just think we should sort of um. New Joes down the road should know these things exist, so. And that is sort of uh, at a high level, we just sort of let you know what the, the policy changes are and then um. You approve them, we put them into handbooks and they go out to the staff by the. I wanna say end of this week, but following out the end of this week, but definitely by the end of the month, they'll have their new policy handbooks to use to guide their, their work. And I'll take any question anybody might have.
About policy updates? There's uh, no questions? May I have a motion to approve the policy updates? Want to put up for? So, yeah. Cynthia, thank you. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Go. Um, all those in favor, please sign with a aye. Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? The policy updates are approved. Um, and now we have an amended bylaws. Joe, would you like to discuss that?
So this is uh basically the same logic as why we're coming to you is around the virtual meeting changes that went into effect on April like third or April ninth. Uh, most of the uh rules that guide the governing board are. Put in the bylaws that get reviewed every five years or so. So we. Are amending the current existing policies, I'm sorry, bylaws to reflect. What now is allowable under ORC to hold those uh virtual meetings. So I just provided a overview of the various article sections that are in our bylaws and everyone, I believe, got a draft copy of sort of, you could tell exactly what the language was changing. This is just a high-level overview. Um, I'll call out, most of the information being uh updated is around um board meetings, Article Five. Uh, we did have it vetted by the prosecuting attorney's office, so uh Janine Hummer asked for some additional clarification around some language about executive sessions. But everything else tied to the changes for amendment are built around that Ohio revised code that will allow us to start holding virtual meetings.
So um, we're allowed to hold. We're allowed to hold virtual meetings and if we put it in our bylaws. Are we, we're not required to do it if we have it in our bylaws. So we put it in there because the ORC says that it's allowable.
It's an option to let, let people know, future board members, future staff, that virtual meetings exist as an option, but we're not saying it's. Uh, a requirement. It's just there to help you kind of, if you decide to use them, this is what you need to do to put them in place.
Joe, was there anything substantive out of the prosecutor's office specific to executive session?
I just didn't have like the full list of the, there's, there's a, I don't know, seven or eight sort of reasons why you would go into executive session. I'd always just sort of. Oh, these are the ones I've known Adam H. Has used in the past. Janine's like, well, you should put them all in there. So they're all just sort of. Right from the same section of ORC that spells out all the exclusion.
Joe, do you wanna say more about some of these decision points in the future about when we would vote virtual, when virtual or hybrids possible versus when in-person and then things about voting?
Yeah, so that's the big change that's coming. Uh, if you approve the amendments to, to, tonight, moving forward, all of June's meetings and forward could be. Uh, either virtual, a hybrid where some of us are still in person, but some of you are asking to be, be um. Online, and that's kind of why we're trying to set up this system to sort of see how, how that might operate. Uh, the, I might have said this last month, the big change is that. We're gonna have to verify that you have video conference technology at your off-site location to actually be participating appropriately. And it requires you to be seen and heard at all times when you're uh virtual. And that's, we're still trying to get our heads around that. That's that iVideo conversation we had, uh, we're having that tour tomorrow to kind of come up with maybe some new technology to help us. Provide more screen in the space that we wanna hold meetings. And then the other sort of big change, at least internally, that we've sort of, we talked about this today at senior staff, how our, our production schedule needs to change to allow. Uh, we do try to get you the board packets at least by the Friday before a board meeting. That's gotta change because you need uh forty-eight hours. That's got to change because you need 48 hours per ORC to look at what's being presented. And if we had told you it was a virtual meeting or a hybrid meeting and you said, oh no, this content is so important. So important. This content is maybe something that requires us to have an in-person meeting. Two of you would reach out to us to say, we're voting to, to change the way we're holding the meeting. And that kicks off a bunch of adjustments we need to make. But because of that, we are going to strive to get you the board packet Wednesday, committee packets, Wednesdays before the following week's meetings, so that you can have time to reflect on the content and decide if you thought it was something that requires changes to the way we advertise, the way we're hosting the meeting. So and we're going to also use that conversation as part of the coordinating committee agenda every month. We'll sort of just say, staff thinks this is a meeting where we could probably have a hybrid scenario and just kind of confirm that coordinating committee agrees. But then that's, that vote still is accessible to all staff, or all trustees. And you would need to, we're hoping you'd be able to respond Friday by noon of the week before a meeting, because that, there is some activity here that we're going to have to sort of adjust. And we're just hoping that we can do that in, in the hours, in the afternoon of a Friday. So.
You know, it's an adjustment. We'll prompt you as needed as we, as we work our way through this and, and build our muscles here. But essentially, my understanding is if action is above a certain dollar amount, we have to meet in person. If there is an executive session held, you have to meet in person. Some things are not permissible to have a virtual meeting or a hybrid meeting. And so flagging that at the coordinating committee level would prompt some type of, we would hope the coordinating committee would say, hey, we recommend this be available for virtual attendance or not. And then if we were to put out the agenda and someone wants to challenge that or objects to us having virtual capability, could say, we request to have the meeting be in person. All of this is in code.
But I also think you need flexibility because people's, I know, challenges change.
That's right.
And, and, and there are people, my understanding is there are allowances, right, for last minute emergency situations.
We drafted a definition of what emergency meant, so that you would approve that to kind of guide your decision. Like 48 hours is sort of the window we would hope you would let us know so we can do some planning. You still have that emergency definition within the bylaws to say, hey, I, I'm sick. I'm not coming in. I don't want to spread germs. Or I got stuck traveling back to Columbus, so I'm not going to be able to make it. And we've tried to define that appropriately to kind of give us some wiggle room to allow you to still participate, even though you thought prior to Friday, you were going to be in person.
It seems complicated. We're going to try to make it simple.
I was going to say, I, I would recommend looking at the last couple of years of the action items that have been on the agenda and plotting out which ones.
We've done that, actually. So some of the scenarios we thought about would be, we would expect the August board meeting to be in person. That's where we pass those, the two largest board actions we do every year, which is provider budgets, provider allocations, and the administrative budget. So that's a threshold of amounts of dollars being spent, that we should think would be in person. February, when we brought you the levy resolution to pass, that is actually in ORC, that that's a type of tax. A tax request is, cannot be held virtually. So that would be an example. Eric and I were thinking about when we had that special emergency meeting a couple of years ago, because of the closure of Netcare's 24/7 or 23, 24/7 service, we thought that that might be an example of, we probably should hold that meeting in person. So as we develop our agendas.
We always have the
Any executive.
Any executive sessions. I mean, we, there are some months that are more routine than others.
That's exactly right.
I do think for the rest of the year, the one that we know for sure is the August. Nothing else that we sort of have on our tickler is, seems to suggest and nothing but hybrid would be okay for the rest of them, I think.
Okay, any other questions for Joe? Then I need to read the resolution. The resolution amending the bylaws of the Adam H. Board of Trustees. Whereas the Adam H. Board of Trustees is permitted to establish and amend bylaws to carry out the purposes of Chapter 33, 3403 of the Ohio Revised Code for Boards of Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Powers and Duties. And whereas such bylaws have been amended to incorporate the requirements defined in Section 121, point 221 of the Ohio Revised Code, which addresses virtual meetings. And whereas the amended bylaws have been presented to the Boulevard Board for Review. And whereas the bylaws may be amended by a two-thirds vote of those members present and voting at any duly called meeting of the Adam H. Board, now therefore be it resolved by the Adam H. Board of Franklin County, that it has approved the amended bylaws. They have a motion to amend the bylaws. John, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The amended bylaws are approved.
Just two more comments. The amendment, there's a resolution that'll be signed tonight and we'll pull the bylaws together with that new resolution in it and it'll be uploaded to diligent community by the end of the week. So you have your official bylaws within the library of diligent community. And we probably will have some emails coming from us about how we're going to try to practice some of this with the June meetings. And as of right now, I think we're going to hold our meeting the way we already have them on the books. And probably just treat them all hybrid as, just to kind of test out the process.
Thank you, John. A lot of work went into that. Joe poured over this code and, and did his best to modeled all kinds of scenarios to make sure we brought you the simplest versions. So thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, that leads us to committee reports. There are two committee, committee reports this evening. John Neil Lindsay.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee met this month on May the 5th. We discussed in depth a lot of the things that you heard tonight regarding the quarterly finance report. And also Erica gave us an update on the current status of the levy. One of the things that we discussed at the meeting that I did not see in your packets is the, the new business enterprise report.
Anthony actually has an update for you.
This is a new report that we've put together. This is, we shared the, the report for the first quarter of 2025 of the Finance Committee. This was a follow-up request, which was to get a breakdown of the 2024 report. So what this does is it shows the admin budget and the provider budget. You'll see those are on the left. And then dollar breakdowns for different diverse vendor category, categories to the right. And then our, our overall spending amount. So for admin, or, and we have definitions further down, but essentially MBE is minority business enterprise. It was about a little over four percent of the admin budget for 2024. Women-owned businesses is 1.6%. And then you'll see the other breakdowns here. The provider budget is a little different in that those, those are more so considered subgrants and vendors don't always go through with certification, even if they may qualify as an MBE or one of the other groups. But for the provider budget, you'll see that the MBE is APDS and SEBE is directions for youth and families. So you'll see those dollar amounts. We're, we're definitely focused on increasing those percentages. We gave the breakdown for 2025 and talked through some of the different vendors that have showed up in the report so far. And there are some crisis center vendors that are also MBEs that haven't shown up yet because the invoices haven't been paid yet. But you can see through the first quarter of this year, our MBE percentage is closer to 7%. So that's an improvement. And although our, our WBE number is a little lower at this point, this point in the year. So this is a report that we continue to, we plan to continue to update so that you have transparency on this information. And it's, it's percentages that we want to get up higher over time.
Thank you, Anthony. I appreciate it. No further.
Thank you. Nikki, will you provide an update on the main nominating committee meeting?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The committee met just before today's board meeting and discussed three topics. One, the status of the terms of the board members, including progress on reappointments. The second was the process for recruiting and interviewing potential members. Three, the officer's slate and committee assignments for the next state fiscal year, which runs July to June. Actually, there's a fourth. Joe will be reaching out to all board members this week to determine if anyone wants to request new assignments. If adjustments are requested, they will be presented to the board at the June board meeting. Also, we'd like to add that if there's anyone who wants to chair a committee, please let us know soon. As we will be developing and finalizing, having an idea, finalizing a new slate of committee chairs and committee members by June 6th. So Joe's going to send out a reminder after June, after Memorial Day on that. So that is what we discussed.
Priority project reports. Erica, do you have anything you want to highlight about those?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I would love to ask Monica Sarazuela, just to provide an update to the board on where we are in our advocacy efforts. You, and also we'll call your attention to page 26 in our, in your board packet. It has a summary of a lot of the activities. Our team has been hard at work. And I want to call out Danny Eaton. I know he's not here tonight, but it was great having him in a briefing with Nancy, Columbia City Council member Nancy Dayak Howard, talking about how we can further partner on veterans initiatives. But it was, it was awesome to do that briefing alongside Danny. And she's got a lot of respect for him and hate for her. And so it was really great. So we always, and we love partnering with you all as trustees with some of our key stakeholders. But Monica has a, just an update. We want to like, make sure you all know what we're watching and monitoring in the federal and state. It's changing all the time.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Good to be with you. Just want to provide a brief update on some things, again, as Erica mentioned, that we are monitoring. I want to start off first with the state level update. As you know, state budget time, it's occurring as I've been sharing the last few months during your meetings. Right now, we're waiting for the Senate to introduce their version of the budget. We expect that to happen the first week of June. So we're anxiously awaiting that. At the same time, I, we just wanted to make sure you all were aware that we are engaging in conversations through our statewide association around the Adam H. Board block grant proposal that's within the budget. The Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services is engaging with boards about this block grant proposal and specifically the formula. We're assuming that this block grant proposal will move forward and be included in the final budget. And it's a way for Adam H. Boards, because we have in the past received so many different funding from various line items to streamline the way that we receive our state funding. We're, again, engaging with our statewide association and the states on what those factors should be in the formula. Of course, as the largest county in the state, we would like to see population be a factor of consideration. However, when you are engaging with 49 other county boards, where, you know, population is actually a negative in their regard. Again, we are, we are at the table advocating, because at the end of the day, the formula will ultimately determine how much money we as a board receive through these block grant proposals. We are happy to hear that the state has committed that we will be held harmless in the next fiscal year. We'll receive at least the same, the amount that we've received in fiscal year 25. But it's in fiscal year 27 where we really see that formula start to kick in. So just know that we are engaging in those conversations now. At the federal level, I know Anthony mentioned in his reports, trustee Bartley, you, you had asked last board meeting about the earmark. And we are very happy that we were able to draw down those funds, no issues. And the, the last federal update I'd like to give tonight is, the, the big topic right now is the budget reconciliation bill. Right now, at this very moment, the House is trying to see if they have the votes to put forward their budget proposal. And I want to talk through a few of the Medicaid provisions that are currently in this budget bill. Next slide, please. The first is around eligibility check frequency. It changes. Currently, states conduct determinations every year for Medicaid eligibility and now changes that frequency to twice a year. The second area is around the federal Medicaid assisted percentage. I know that in my updates the last few months, I've talked about this Medicaid trigger language that's in the state budget. Right now, in the current version of the bill, there really isn't anything that would lower Ohio's FMAP for our Medicaid expansion population. This provision is really the only thing that targets the FMAP around states that covers undocumented individuals. Ohio is not one of those states. So we are happy, as of right now, that Medicaid expansion is not under threat in Ohio with the current proposal. The third area is around cost sharing for Medicaid expansion adults. This is something that they are proposing. We were happy to see, actually, late Sunday night, that they added language that would prohibit cost sharing on primary care, mental health care, and substance use disorder services. So again, we see that as a positive. Next slide, Joe. And lastly, the, the big area is around implementing work requirements for able-bodied adults without dependence. Again, this would be encompassing anyone from ages 19 to 64. If you are able-bodied, would be required to meet those requirements. There are some exemptions. I'll call out the fourth bullet around individuals who do have a chronic substance use disorder. Individuals with a serious and complex medical condition. We assume that that would include individuals with severe persistent mental illness. So we are happy to see those exemptions in there. The timeline, I do want to call out, in the current version of the bill, it is, these work requirements would go into effect January 1st, 2029. However, that is likely to change. We know that the hardline conservatives in the House are saying those need to be implemented sooner than later. And that's really one of their big bargaining points right now, is they're trying to decide whether or not they are going to vote for this budget reconciliation bill. So again, this is not all inclusive of all the things that they're proposing around Medicaid, but those are just some of the highlights. I'll just end by saying, this could have been a lot worse. But I, I really think the advocacy that has taken place over the last few weeks and months to members of Congress about what cuts to Medicaid would mean. You know, they, they realize that they, they don't want large, millions and millions of people across the country to lose coverage overnight. So we, again, this is, we're going to continue to monitor it. But we will see, again, the first step is getting it passed out of the House and we will see if they have the books to do so.
My understanding is there's a committee meeting tonight at 1:30 AM. I think it's scheduled for 1:30 AM. It depends on what they're trying to do, right? Thank you very much, Monica. I appreciate that. Madam Chair, I believe that it concludes my report. The last thing I will mention for the June meeting, we will bring forward, you will receive a draft of our annual report for your approval. We'll also have our annual clients' rights, clients, client's rights report presented to you from Henry Bryant. And sadly, I believe there are two trustees that will be our last meeting for, and that's Randy Smith and Trudy Bart. So you have to show up now that I've called you both out.
Okay, we have an executive session this evening. I'd like a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of the compensation of a public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual. They have a motion, please.
I'm moved.
Thanks, Dean. Is there a second? Thank you, Nikki. Okay, the board is not permitted to make any decisions in executive session discussions. In the session are confidential. Members of the board should not disclose to anyone not present what we discussed. A roll call is required for an executive session. Diane, would you please take role?
Trudy Bartley. Bob Bitson-Homther.
Yes.
Joseph Garrity.
Yes.
Nikki Hampton.
Yes.
Dean Hindenlang.
Yes.
Melissa Klosterman-Lando.
Yes.
Synthony Latney.
Yes.
Stephen Lawrence. Tony Johnson-Liggins.
Yes.
John Neil Lindsay.
Yes.
Bob Morris. Randy Smith.
Yes.
Donna Ziderwick.
Yes. Okay.